Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming to our opening meeting today, Tuesday, the 11th of March, joined today by Mark. Hopefully you can hear us okay.
Yep, hearing loud and clear, Chair.
Thank you. So we'll start at the 56624 Apologies for Absence. Karen.
Apologies have been received from councillors A Blackburn, D Blackburn, M Brindall, D Evans, T Jurn, M McDonald, H MacAinbridge, A Mitchell, B Ross Smith, and S Terry.
Thank you. Technology to catch up. So the next item is 56724 Minutes The Planning Committee Held on the 11th of February 2025. Members happy that they be signed as a true record? Please, thank you. So 56824 Declarations For Any Disclosive Or Pecuniary Interest. Anybody wishes to make those away? None shown. 56924 We're on to the planning applications and the first item is A. Over to you, Mark.
Thank you, Chair. So first one, Seven Colts Footway, as shown in blue on the map there. So if we can just head down to the first bit. So I found a little sort of very basic guide to noise levels because I think this is going to be an issue that keeps coming up from now on. So it might be interesting for you to see that and compare with some of the noise levels that are reported from the various bits of machinery that are going to come up. So bearing in mind it's a logarithmic scale, so it's sort of, it's not just proportionate. It goes up dramatically for every 10. So if you are, just so you can see, hopefully, I'm probably coming through to you at 65 as a normal conversation level. And yeah, the 85 decibels exposure is the point at which you're supposed to have hearing protection. So that's something like the brush cutters I use at work, for example, machinery like that. So the equipment in this case, the air conditioners, has a sound power level of 65. So that's what it's outputting at source and the sound pressure level of 55. Now, it's quite difficult to interpret these figures, but I usually at about a metre from the piece of machinery, by convention it seems to be. So that would put it at sort of less than it's showing on the left as an air conditioning, somewhere above a floor fan, but certainly less than sort of conversation at a normal level. So if we go down to the picture of the equipment concerned, so you can see the two items highlighted there as shown down the side alley of the house. If we could go down a little bit further, thanks, Alan. And yep, that's all there is for this one. Back to you, Chair.
Thank you. Do the members have any comments?
That's just a... Thank you. Firstly, just credit where credit is due. councillor Annie Blackbon did send an email with quite a bit of context to this. The support she's provided, I do really appreciate that. Based off of that report, the house individuals required to have a noise assessment done cost over a thousand pounds. The noise will be minimal. These are, again, some more context behind it. The units are also for health reasons. I personally believe this is something we should be supporting.
Anybody else wish to comment? Okay. So don't take it we're a supporter. All those in favour, please. Thank you. Mark, next one.
Thank you, Chair. So yeah, this one, Hardy Close. So this is an existing use of part of a house for a business. So it's a massage room that's already been in place in what was a garage, it's part of the house. So the outline of the plot in blue there. And if we then go down to see a picture of the house there with the sort of triangular driveway. So it's the one in the middle there. And you can see, if you look to the right of the front door, as we see it, there is a window there. Yep, thanks, Alan. That's where the garage was. And that has been converted, as I say, to the room, which has, as I say, the massage room and associated toilet that goes with it. So again, the plans just outlined in red shows the plot. And if you look at these, they have a little bit more detail about where exactly the garage conversion is, as I say, just to the right of the front door, as you see it from the road. So if we could just go down, I think there's a little bit of text we can see there. So yeah, basically, it sets out their opening hours. In fact, that they have already been running as a business for four and a bit years now. So the opening hours are there. It is still mainly a house and it's that room that is used for business purposes. So we can just go down to the rest of the little bit of the text there. So yeah, that's from their statement, just saying that they don't see it being causing additional parking problems. So as it was, ground floor there, as I said, had the garage to the right of the front door and as shown on the front elevation there. And if we just go down slightly to the next one, again, that's basically just confirming what you've already seen from the picture on the right there, that that's the converted area. And the plan there shows what part of the house it takes up. And that's it for that. Back to you, Chair.
Thank you. Any comments?
Councillor Land. I'm gonna echo those of the mayor here and say instinctively, I don't like retrospective applications. I think we need a lot more about this than we've actually got. We've got no mention of vehicle movements, how many people expect to have a day or anything else. It feels, the sniff test is great as well, so.
Thank you. Mr Harvey?
I don't know. This question is, when they're to say it's irrelevant. If part of the house is being used as business, do they have to pay business rates?
Usually you'd have to register for business rates, but because if the thing is so small or the turnover is so small, then you probably wouldn't have to actually pay any, because you get a small business rate relief. I don't know the turnover or whatever there, or the rules that apply on it. But normally you would get the business, you know, recalling it is for business use, and which I think, you know, it will be going forward. And that has been done as part of this planning application. Mr Peters?
When I moved into Zedford, I've got a garage and part of my thing that you get in the pack that you get said that because it was a, when you're not allowed to have it for business use, is that the same over there or is it? I don't, I don't really know. You know, I can't understand a part of that would be, you can't have business use in that garage or the house, but other parts are not.
So normally, there's somebody, they put a covenant on the use. So some of the covenants may say you're not allowed to have animals in there in your garden and all that type of thing. I don't know if there's a covenant associated with that. So we haven't got the information to hand. And then it usually comes down who's actually going to enforce the covenant, if there was one, which I suspect is what you're referring to, the details within the, when you bought that house. Or, Councillor Harvey?
There's a trend set in now. We've had lots of businesses move out of the town, hairdressers, et cetera, et cetera. They've lost business in the town and they've moved into people's houses. It's not a good trend to set. We have trouble, you know, we're losing town centre businesses. We have lots of rooms that we could let, King's House, for example, and yet people are using their houses instead of businesses. I'm not sure that's a trend we really want to support, to be fair.
So is that, I'm going to stir up, sorry.
I'm sorry. And no, there's a couple of things. One, we don't also have any information as to why this is a retroactive application, which gives me a bit cause for concern, especially with a lot of the problems we've been having lately. And the other thing that also gives me a bit of least support, we had quite a long debate ourselves and it goes directly on quite a long debate with them, the idea of turning sheds, converting them into accommodation for people's elderly family members. But the idea of, oh, well, just like you don't into a massage parlor instead. I feel like, you know, if we're going to debate for quite a while and like someone lived there to care for their family, we should also take the time to have the food for thought for converting to a business. It's a modern world, things are expensive. I get it. You know, I understand why someone would want to do this. The precedent is the problem I have because if you, and I know we don't live in a world where just because one gets everyone shut, but that is the argument that's going to be made by, in theory, every single one of that person's neighbours who can now, if this person gets permission, the idea of carte blanche, the entire street will become a full gardens, full of everyone's mini businesses. So I don't know, the fact it's a retrospective one, yes, is a big problem. I don't know on what grounds we can say no on. But the precedent is something I really don't like, the idea of just everyone's garden is now going to become their business. But the retroactive is something I don't really like at all. For me, that would be an instant no, if we can go for that because you're not taking the time to follow the channels properly.
Councillor Land?
We had a similar application on, I think, Oster, on the Norwich Road Estate, where all of them was operating. I think it was a beauty salon. We turned that one down on the grounds that it wasn't appropriate for residential area. And I think this could well match objection.
Thank you. Just to echo some of the sentiments over the years.
Fishers, sorry.
Sorry, it was fishery. Yeah, so over the years, there has been concern about businesses being set up in people's garages or gardens and that generally, the objections that come about in terms of the traffic movements tends to be the easiest way to object to things because, you know, there is a valid planning ground, the number of vehicle movements in that. But as you say, we do not have the information how many vehicle moves there are in relation to this. So I get sensing that there's a feeling you want to object. Am I correct in that? Yeah, okay. So obviously, just show hands to object.
On principle, yeah.
Yep. And so the grounds would be presumably the traffic movements, but also the principle of, you know, not being appropriate for residential area. Is there anything else, Mark, that you feel we can add to that?
Not necessarily, Chair. There is, if I, it might be possible to reconstruct the sort of number of vehicle movements from the length of appointments and the gap between them, which we could, I could look up, as it were, later down. I think there is a little bit more information in that, in the planning application itself, which I didn't have room to put into this or didn't feel it was going to be necessary. But we could look at that and give you some idea of the number of vehicle movements. I believe if memory serves, it's an hour with a half an hour between that. So that should give you some idea of the sort of approximate number of vehicle movements. But yeah, I'm not sure there is, as I said, much further, you can say on planning grounds about that one, I'm afraid.
So we'll leave it at that then, objection with those two objections.
You also want to object on retrospective planning? Use that as a basis of objection?
We can do, yeah.
Yes, I mean, five years is ridiculous. It was all wrong.
Right, to the next one then, Mark.
Thank you, Chair. So yeah, if we can just go down to the next one. So this one is a couple of houses. Some of your hutch houses, you can see there, owned by Flagship Group and a picture on the right. On the right, if you note the slightly unusual kind of pitch of the roof, it sort of doesn't quite meet in the middle. One side is higher than the other, which will be relevant to some of the pictures below. So if we just go down to the map, you can see there it's amongst that sort of smartest way complex of houses. The existing ones have that cladding as was shown in the picture. So the proposed ones, if we can just go down and show them together, the cladding, the wooden cladding along the top bit there is due to be replaced by the, by rendering. If we just go down a little bit further. So as I said, if you remember the picture of that route, you're looking at the other side of the building on that side elevation from the one that was shown on the photograph. So again, can we just go up again a little bit further and so we can see the existing and the proposed together if possible? So again, you can see the existing with that one cladding to be replaced by the render. And it's saying the same on that side elevation. The other side elevation, if you like, the one we saw in the photograph, doesn't seem to be included in the plans. So I'm not sure what their plans for that is. I would have to assume, based on the lack of information, that the, that sort of pebble dash effect or the flint effect would be retained on that side because there doesn't seem to be any plan showing a change to that. So from their design access statement, the render, as it says there, is designed to increase insulation. It's an external feature which adds about nine centimetres to the outside of the building and thus reduce his heat loss and therefore carbon emissions. The one thing I don't, I don't see in this is what colour it's going to be. They do, they do tell in detail what type of render it is, Johnston's particular type of render, but it doesn't actually say what colour it would be. And I can, again, only work on assumption it might be the same as it is. On the other hand, it might be bright fluorescent pink. As I say, it doesn't seem to be included within the application as far as I can tell. I think that's the end of the one for that one. So back to you, Chair.
Thank you. I think the existing cladding is like wood effect with dark brown paint.
Yeah, the existing cladding is, but if you, I guess if we go back up to the picture, we might be able to see the, the lower part of the building. Unfortunately, it's a very strategically positioned bush. But if you just, yeah, that's exactly, if you just look to the left of where that bush is, you can see a sort of pale grey rendering effect, which is what is currently there. As I say, I don't know whether that's going to be the case afterwards.
Yeah. And obviously, whilst just trying to point out, the wooden cladding is disappearing. So whatever render does go on, we'll have that colour. So I think that's a question we want to ask, as whether we agree or not. Are we happy to support otherwise?
Yes.
Wait, sorry, Councillor Land?
I think this is, how do you say, rather typical application by flagship, which is a bit half-hearted. Doesn't give us the full story and feels to be a little bit wobbly. It says here that part of the purpose of the render is to mitigate against damp. I'm not sure how any render is ever going to do that. The buildings, I happen to know these buildings, they're of non-standard construction. They're made up of about six or so big panels with flint in them. I don't understand how rendering a building is going to make any difference to damp whatsoever. And without a car, I don't feel, I'm not against the, I don't think we can sign it on fire.
I assume in terms of ex- by increasing the thickness of the walls, you then insulate it a little bit more. That's the only thing I can think of, that trying to mitigate there. Mr Harvey?
Yeah, I've had some dealings with that because the tree, this is actually here in the roof, came down a couple of trim back. It just seems strange. Of all the houses in this whole block, we're only going to do two. I know a couple of them were down to five hundred ready, but I mean, it's definitely a step forward, but it's, why, Mark, why are they doing the whole lot? We should recommend they do the whole lot because they are bad. The damp, the house gives them six, seven a lot and major issues with damp and it's coming through the wood, et cetera.
So we have a sport that's subject to the colour. Yep. So hopefully in the phrase that, Mark, that we would like something sympathetic to the existing buildings in the vicinity.
That, yeah, you could say that, you could ask that.
Happy to go with that? Okay, thank you. We'll move on then to, what have we got? Tensham Way, I think?
Yep. So if we can just go through that, yep, here we go. So yeah, 11 Tensham Way. So this is a single storey extension that basically wraps around three stories, three sides of the vehicles. So front side of the house, front side and rear. And there are sort of internal layout alterations that go with that. So also, they're also putting on render, replacing the existing brick. And there is also this new vehicle access with a dropped curb. And the first thing there is that highways are objecting to that. So they say it's very close to the junction. It's actually on Tensham Way side and therefore they're objecting on that grounds. But as we'll see in a minute, they are suggesting an alternative place to increase the parking capacity. So this is the bit that I didn't notice at the first and I've just added in, rather than very kindly added it into the pack later. So if you look at, before we go, we'll just go to the pictures first, actually, if that's all right, of the front. So this is, as I say, it's going to be slightly confusing because there's, the front door is on the side there. So you're looking at the Hardy Close on the side there, where the blue fencing is and Tensham Way along the main road. And the house, as I said, sort of faces sideways from where you might expect it to. And then they have that sort of plot that runs alongside, along where the blue fence is. So yeah, if we can have a look at that extra picture that some of you may not have seen. And so I must admit, when I first looked at this, I didn't realise that the garage there is apparently part of the question, property in question. So the garage on the left of the two garages there, the one with the bluer door and the red car outside it, is part of the property in question. And it's therefore there where highways are suggesting that parking should be increased by, by having extra capacity for another car in that area rather than on the front. Can we just go back to the plan just above it? So this is where I, I didn't notice it because it doesn't seem, it didn't, it wasn't labelled. So it was actually in, just in a diagram showing where the sun's going. But if you look at the plot on the side there, the left-hand side of the plot is where the, where the sort of garage and potential extra parking according highways is. And on the right-hand side there, those symbols with the crosses on them is where, yeah, so that's the, alongside the road is where they're suggesting. Yep, it's suggesting a drop curb. And then again, although it doesn't seem to be explained as far I can see, those, those X marks inside the red line are where they were hoping to have their parking spaces. As I said, which would be where you'd think the front of the house was, but actually the front door is on the side or top of that picture. So I hope that makes sense now, perhaps a little bit more, so you can understand what they were proposing and what highways are objecting to. Okay, if we go down to the next bit, just beyond there. So that's, as I said, the plot in question, as I said, so yeah, instead of the entrance being on Tensham Highways wanting to be on Hardy at the left-hand side. Okay, let's go down. So if we have a look at, is it possible to fit the existing and proposed on the same screen? Or are we not going to quite fit that in? Not quite. Okay. So if we have a look at the existing ones first then. So you can see, hopefully, the, the scale of the building. And there is a little bit, if you remember that, that front door and where it says WC Utility on the left-hand plan there, that sticks out from the fundamentally box shape of the house on the ground floor level. And if we now go, keep that in mind, go back to the proposed. Now, the sort of vertical dotted line of the two vertical dotted lines, the one on the right is pretty much the old line of the house. And you can see that there is this wraparound bit that comes on the front. Actually easier to see on the first four plans where you can see the sort of roof of that single story extension. So there's a bit on the front, there's a bit on all along the side and all along the back of the building is proposed. So yeah, where the, as I said, it's perhaps clearest on that first floor plans where you can see the roof added on to the existing building. So yeah, there are some layout changes as well within, but as I said, the main thing is that extra bit all around the, the three sides. So as regards materials, pretty much to match, but there is render as well as brickwork on the walls. And we just got, so if we can, again, I don't think we're going to be able to see these both at once. But so where it says existing front elevation, so that's based on their front door, as it were. And what's confusing about this is this, these, which is front and which is side changes between the existing and the proposed, just to confuse you. So rear elevation, sorry, can we just look at the existing still just for a second? So rear elevation, that'd be looking at from the, from the back garden, sort of, you know, just behind that blue fence, as it were. And the existing side elevation on the left there, that would be looking at it from the main road, if you like, Tensham Way. Okay, if we now have a look at the next bit, so you can see the, the bit from view from Tensham Way has now become the front elevation because it's got the front, the front door on it. Rear elevation is still the same view, I, from the back garden. And the side elevation is what you would see along the highly close side of the building with that projecting little roof over the front door at the left-hand side of that proposed side elevation. That's it for that. Back to you, Chair.
Thank you. Comments? Mr Harvey?
Yeah, when I was on the panel at breakfast, I always used highways as one of the best guides that we had. And if highways object, then I think we shouldn't.
Yep. Any other grounds that we wish to object or are we just happy with the highways? Okay, so we're objecting on the grounds of highways advice.
Yeah, indeed. Thank you, Chair. So yeah, if we can go on to the next one, please, Alan.
Pike Lane, then.
Sorry, I'm just writing.
Oh, okay. When you're ready.
I believe we've had proposals for this area before. So this is.
It has come up, yeah.
Semi-traffic dwellings.
Yep. So this is the, as you say, the latest iteration of this one. So site, I think, as I said, you're all too familiar with. And again, a view from the roadside is just below it. Again, I'm sure you're, you're very familiar with that. So yeah, if we go down to the picture. So that's the entrance that's proposed as the entrance to the site or to the houses. So they had an ecological report done on this area. As you can see, it's sort of quite greened over at the moment. Ecological report notes nothing of, in a particular importance, as you perhaps might expect. It's, you know, a lot of nettle and bramble particularly. And if we just go down to the trees. Now, on the ecological report, it refers to two semi-mature ash trees. And I believe they are referring, in fact, to the sort of double tree, which is on the sort of left, left centre of the picture. Yeah. So as you can see, there's kind of two stems there. So when on the tree report, that is referred to as one tree, which again may avoid some confusion. And then on the right-hand side or sort of the corner of that plot, there is the willow, which again will be referred to a little bit lower down. And the ecological report refers to those as sort of the ones that are the most important of the site, if you like, all the, the ones that will be most useful to wildlife. So overall, their ecological report has no sort of objections to the development or no suggestions for changes to it. So if we now consider the tree report, so the tree report is not saying any of the trees are of sort of huge importance, either for amenity or ecology. The development proposes removing four of the trees. So basically, yeah, if we can go down to that and preferably see the map brilliantly. So one, two, five and six. So if you can, you'll see there one and two at the bottom. So they would be. Um, so they would be, would have been on the left of the picture as we saw it before. Three and four uh are the ones uh that are to be retained. So those are the ones that are mentioned in the ecological report just above. Five and six are at the sort of top of your picture and seven and eight are actually not in the um development site. They are sort of hanging over from uh next door. So um, yeah, again, the tree report suggests nothing of, you know, enormous value to those uh trees. And therefore they are, this is the applicants' tree report. Um, so we can see again, one, two, five and six. Uh, you can see the details there of the trees as uh reported in the applicant's tree report. Um, and us giving their justification for uh removing those. And, yep, if we go down to the next bit, we can see the bits to be retained. So um, on the uh, on the left there is that uh is number one. And then they show the stump there as, as, as an extra justification for that not being a uh one that's worth retaining. It's sort of grown up from a previous uh coppicing attempt, basically. And two is again a self-set goat willow in the west corner of the site. Um, so they are proposing to, uh, and this, this plan just below, yeah, that's great, uh, shows uh that more clearly. So they're proposing, um, because it conflicts with their development aims, one and two to be removed. So that's the ones with the pictures just above there. Three and four, as I said, to be retained, uh, five and six to be removed, uh, which are the smaller ones where they want to put parking. And uh, seven and eight, there are recommendations for um sort of crown lifting, pruning of those uh to uh ensure access, basically. Um, so that's in terms of the trees. So it is basically, as I said, uh, four, four lost, two retained. Um, on the grounds that uh they have retained the ones that they consider the more important ones. So that's basically three and four and seven and eight, as I said, are, are actually in the neighbours' grounds. Okay, if we move on to the next bit. Um, so three and four, um, again, you'll, you'll probably recognise those two. That's the sort of double ash and that willow in the corner there would be the ones that be therefore retained. And they would basically be behind the house as you see it in the, in, or houses, sorry, in the picture, you see it there. Uh, so this is from the applicant's own uh design access statement. So um, they are, as I said, intending to use the existing uh entrance to become a driveway uh with one vehicle space for each um two-bedroom dwelling. The um, uh, so they also point out that there will be the, the bin storage and cycle parking uh can be seen. So if we go down to the plans below, if we can, so you can see how the cars are um uh sort of, you know, the, where the cars are intended to be, they'd sort of pretty much have to be there. Um, so to be able to fit past each other. You've got the two houses there that are basically pretty much carbon copies of each other or mirror images, perhaps I should say. Uh, with a uh, they, the small bedroom downstairs there has got an en suite loo. And you can see a sort of uh kitchen and lounges for each of those on the ground floor. And on the right, you've got the first floor. Uh, so upstairs, there is basically a larger bedroom with a, again, an en suite uh bathroom there. Uh, which is proposed for, again, each, each of the two uh dwellings. Uh, so in terms of materials, uh, they want to put flint panels to the front elevation. Um, and brick to the rest of it. Uh, that's our roof. Obviously, there's no existing because there's nothing there at the moment. Um, and U P V C windows and doors. So if we now go down to have a look at the plans themselves, you can see, again, said no existing because uh this, there's nothing there at the moment. You can see the uh proposed look of uh the sort of double building uh with the one, just, yeah, the one we're seeing at the bottom there being uh the front. What you would see from, as you come in, and we just go down slightly. Yeah, so again, you can see, see it from all sides there, basically. And if we just go down to the, to the south, so the, yeah, as I said, French, French windows to be, to, uh, to back. Uh, I think we might have reached the end of that. So back to you, Chair.
Thank you. Any comments, councillor Harvey?
Yes, we had this, an application for this site before, did we, for some pods which we turned down. There's two or three things that bother me. Uh, bins, when the bins are going to be empty, where they're going to put them? Pike Lane is a very narrow road, right? Are they going to come out on divulge? I couldn't see anyone there where they dustbin men would go in, or the refuse, sorry, refu- collected would go in to collect the bins.
I would expect them to be pulled to the entrance of the, the driveway there and then stored back on the site. But it may impede some of the parking or it'll have to be stored down the side. But I would expect them to be picked up um from that corner.
I mean, I'm, I'm not really in a bad mood, this is, I'm not, but to my mind, this is, this is an infill. We've had this expression before, an infill, that's not suitable, I don't think in there, to be fair. It's, what, is there any complaints from neighbours, the people who back onto it, anything from neighbours?
Do we know if there's any objections come through yet or because there's still time for that to um, replace, know anything?
No, okay, uh, all right.
Sorry, not as yet, Chair.
Oh, we haven't. Okay, the access port was, to be fair, as we know, they say parking, but we know what's going to happen, don't we? They're going to end up parking. So I do object, again.
Councillor Land?
Thank you, Mr Chair. Um, I don't know, there's comments from councillor Harvey. Um, from memory, the previous uh incarnation, this uh proposal was turned down for uh let me get this right, for um uh over, over dense
Development.
Development. Um, I don't see that having two houses and three changes that in any form at all. They're very small houses, um, with a very big footprint, so uh, you know, with questions.
Okay, anything further? So therefore, are we mindful of object? Can I just show hands for objections? Yep, so the committee wishes to object. Um, so our grounds would be overdevelopment and um traffic issues coming out onto Pike Lane, which is.
Um, Chair, just an update. I haven't been able to see any um neighbor comments, but there has now come in a comment from the uh tree and countryside officer, um, which is, is quite brief. If, if you're right, I'll read it in full. Following on from our conversation, I confirm I cannot support the application in its current form. I feel that two units on the site is far too cramped. One unit along with the retention of the trees would be a better option and any trees lost should be replaced. Any further submissions would require an updated tree survey to include a tree protection plan. Uh, so that's the tree officer's comments.
Councillor Land?
Uh, that, in that case, I just suggest we object to those grounds as well.
Okay, are we happy with that? Yep, thank, thank you. Move forward then to um Hairbell Close.
Okay, thank you, Chair. Let's let Alan catch up. Right, he's got, he has, he has to write and do the uh, do the um, the audio visuals as well, unfortunately. Uh, so, yeah, Hairbell Close, it's one of those spots right at the end there, sort of um uh facing onto the marsh or, or backing onto the marsh, I should say. Uh, so if we have a look at the pictures, so you've got the front view there and rear view is uh sort of um more relevant to this application because that's where uh the uh heat pump is going to be positioned on that wall. Uh, so this, these plans give the sort of layout. So um, relevant to this is the fact that um the top of your, uh, top of that plan, as we look at it, uh, you can just about see hopefully a little box top left just outside the wall that says A S H P, as in air source heat pumps. Uh, so that, yeah, that's it. So that's in that area, which is, as I say, kind of the main external feature. Uh, this plan and particularly the other, the plan below it mainly show the sort of internal layout of the um of the necessary pipework. Uh, so if we can move on to the comment there. So uh, replacing a gas boiler with air source heat pump. Um, so uh, according to their calculations, reducing carbon footprint by about seventy percent. Um, so they have got air conditioning already installed. Um, and uh, that is a picture of the uh model of um air source heat pump that they're intending to install. Uh, you can see again that the figures for sound power level, sound pressure level are very, are quite similar to the uh previous application actually for um air conditioning. So I also draw your attention to the fact the location there of the air source heat pump and the scale in metres uh shows you how far it is from the nearest property. And uh furthermore, it's probably worth noting that fair for Hairbell Close on the right there. Uh, bear in mind, we are looking in that case from the rear of the um uh house. Uh, if you remember from the picture at the front, it is, is the, the driveway um next to it. So it's not right next to their house. Uh, and actually, it's about, it's five metres away from that boundary anyway. So back to you, Chair.
Thank you. Any comments? Uh, happy to.
Yeah, yeah, um, if, if there's not other comments, yeah.
So we're happy to support. Yep, okay, thank you. Moving on.
Um, so the next one um is a building that might be very familiar to you, I think. Uh, I'm not proposing to go into great detail about this, but um uh, the, the town council is itself obviously applying for this uh for uh particularly with the upper gallery in mind. And there are plans, uh, which again, many of you may be more familiar with than I am, in fact, showing all the locations of the various um uh fire alarm and associated systems. Um, so um, yeah, I, I can't see you objecting to it, but uh, there it is. As I said, you can see in detail if you want, the, the, all of the different uh little bits of um equipment that go into into that sort of fire alarm and associated systems. And as I say, um, basically there is a uh heritage statement which uh suggests to the planning authority that there's minimal harms to the building. Um, and on that basis is recommended. So back to you.
I suspect we just need to note as we are the applicant, uh, councillor Jefferson.
I was just about to ask them to correct my ignorance. We do not need to collect interest in this.
Well, that's what I'm saying. We, we need to note here that we can't really, um, as a body, we are putting it forward.
Yeah, I sus- I suspect it would not be relevant to, to make a comment in that sense. So as you say, it's just uh, uh, it is on, it is an application and it is therefore uh on record. And um, yeah, shall we move on to the next item, Chair?
Yep, thank you.
Um, so, yeah, so this is again, uh, not one for commenting on. Uh, as Alan pointed out, the, the tree um applications are, they are not interested in, in, in comments uh on a statutory basis. However, I just thought you would like to note this one in particular because it's one that's came up before. And they, the proposal was initially to remove uh the trees in question. And that has now uh been changed to uh reducing the trees in question to provide two, three metres clearance. I, I'm assuming they mean clearance for, from below to allow vehicle access rather than taking it off the top. But um, yeah, so uh, as I just to note that that uh has changed. And the proposal is now not to remove those uh town centre trees.
Okay, councillor Peterson.
Well, I should really um put a non-perpetual interest because I actually work for Royal Mail. But to give a bit of background on this, um, the, the previous tree application for the tree to be felled was granted and that tree was felled. Um, this is a second tree on the same spot uh which is touching the buildings and that's why they've asked for it to be trimmed back rather than taking down to the stump.
Followed.
Thank you, I don't engage in that.
I don't think, nothing further for us to, to comment on that. Moving on then, to um decisions of variance, I think you've got any?
It's done.
No. So on five seven two twenty-four then, any items to be referred to the Greater Thetford Partnership?
That's all right by you, Chair. I will uh depart.
Thank you once again, Mark. See you next month.
Thank you very much. Cheers.
So five seven three twenty-four, progress on actions from previous meetings. I know we did have a letter that's still outstanding. So in councillor McDonald's guise to, to draft that, so we need to follow up with him. Okay, and then five seven four twenty-four, committee officers' update. Alan, there's anything?
If, if I can just uh ask two things. One is, I've asked some of the councillors, ready, do you want to receive planning applications as they come in? Or do you want to receive them through the planning, okay? Uh, and secondly, uh, I've explained the movement at the time from seven o'clock to six o'clock. Um, it was really just, um, this is a committee, it's not a full council meeting. And it was just to bring all the meetings into, into standard timing. Uh, we would like to have had the extraordinary meeting after this meeting, but you never know how long the first meeting lasts. We did know that the extraordinary meeting wouldn't go on for that long. So it's just to make that note.
Let's do it. Two things and then I sort of have a question for the, for the group. Um, one, uh, I'm more of a fan of getting everything in one go, if that's okay, rather than email, 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 because I'm just losing where I am to, to be honest. I do check them, just make that very clear. However, I, when I mean here, I'm looking at the back anyway, it's all right, I'm just having on the wall. Um, chance of number two, it makes sense making it six. All of it's, it's not a full council, but he answers at six o'clock. Um, I have a question to the group. Um, just, we, we are finished, haven't we?
No, we can finish the meeting.
Yep, so just wait, just wait, stop recording then now.
Yes, you've declared the meeting finished.
I haven't declared the meeting finished.
Thank you. That's, give me two seconds.